Good evening, everyone. Bill Aliold, Mayor, and every councilman is here. John Crawford, Kevin Doherty, Jason Pham, Bob Gonzalez, Lou Nguyen, Andrew Malto, and David Interstation. I'm not going to read off the wards you're in right now. I should have done it as I called their names. But that's okay. We're here tonight. I've been hearing a lot of things about OAN has problems. So tonight, we're going to give you the opportunity to let us know what those problems are. So that we can have some meaningful dialogue in order to take a hard look and say, do we need to change all everything that comes out here tonight? Or are we doing some things right and some things wrong? So having said that, I would like everyone to be respectful of each other's opinions. This is not a debate. This is an opportunity for us to hear what you think is wrong or what you think is right in OAN New York. So having said that, I'm going to ask whoever, Tyron Hall, if he would just give us a little prayer for the start of this event tonight. I guess a prayer of bringing everybody together. Reverend?
Amen. Let us all stand if we can. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. We're just here, and I know that prayer changes things. So as we bow our heads before the Lord, Isaiah 1:18 says, "Now come let us reason together." Lord, we just love you and we thank you for this time. As even the mayor comes up to me and asks me, "Let's set the pace with prayer." And Father, we know that prayer changes things. We're asking you right now for unity. Lord, bless us together. Bring us together. Let us be of reasoning. Let us hear each other's voice, whether good or bad. But let us all move in the direction of love. Because love encompasses a multitude of sin. Just bless us. Bring us together. Because that's what the world needs right now, more love, less hate. Father, we just thank you and we praise you for everybody that's here. Councilmen, mayors, everybody. Because we all are somebody in you. And Lord, we thank you and bless us tonight. And let us have a keen ear of understanding and listening to the voices that need to be heard tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Hall. So I guess there's eight of us standing in the front up here. And we're here to hear your comments, your suggestions of what's going on in OAN New York. And just so everybody knows, we are given, in all three of these town hall meetings that we're having, we are given residents of OAN New York the opportunity to be here first. And as we fill out the list, and the reason we have to do that is because you can see we're limited on the number we can have here. The governor has said to do. We're in phase four. And right now, we could have up to 50, as long as you can social distance and wear masks. Most of us are, I think, everybody is six feet apart. So if you, it's up to you, if you want to keep your mask on or if you can take them off. If you start to move around, please put your mask back on. Okay? So having said that, any, let's start out, any comments from the council right now?
I'd just like to say really quick, Mayor, thank you for putting this together. Welcome everyone to this. I'm glad that we, all of you are here. Very much looking forward to this dialogue. Obviously, it's the first stop of many, hopefully. And hopefully, this is a productive and meaningful discussion and the first of many. So thank you all for being here, and I'm really looking forward to this. I'm glad I could be here today.
Okay. We did have several people sign up to speak. So I believe we, Pichu, how many do we have that want to speak?
About six.
Six?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is about a nine-minute session. We're at 70 minutes now. So let's start out, we're giving everybody five minutes. And then we can adjust if there, if people need more time. So we're going to thank this young lady here. Did you want to speak?
So what I'm going to do is I'll come around and give you the microphone and just state your name and address and kind of like a couple of comments the other night. You know, in that, would you agree to?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Who would like to go first? Not everybody all at once.
Who's first on the list? Can you go and do it that way?
Nikki George. Nikki George.
Nikki George. No pressure, but it's all of you.
So I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight to represent the Forming Police Encounters Campaign, which once again was created after the events that rocked the nation. We have some ideas. We've built a community. We worked together with other support groups in the community. We have some pretty good ideas. And we know that not everything is going to be so black and white, so easy. Some things may need to be tailored to OAN New York specifically. As we're kind of a pretty stable community ourselves. So a few things to highlight would be some initiatives that have already taken off and been approved and, you know, implemented by other mayors around the country and police forces. Probably the biggest one will be Campaign Zero. If you've ever heard of Campaign Zero, they're probably the driving force of the Black Lives Matter movement. And say what you want about the Black Lives Matter movement. It is a civil rights movement. So there's a lot of things intertwined that you can't really put a face on it. You can point to an organization, but it's kind of becoming a collective civil rights movement. But keep that in mind. I have some documents here. Campaign Zero has 10 things that they'd like to see. They say that we can live in a world where the police don't kill people by limiting police intervention, improving community interaction, and ensuring accountability. Number one is to end broken windows policing. That was a type of policing that came about in the early 90s and arguably the mid 80s in Pablo Escobar's America. The basic idea behind broken windows policing is to take resources away from going after big crimes and, you know, detective-style work and the old-fashioned type of policing and focus, refocusing resources to small street crimes and increasing the number of arrests, but overall reducing the number of crimes over time. It worked then. Rudy Giuliani was one of the founders of that. And he's well-known for it as well. It served New York City pretty well for a period of time. But just like most things, if you ignore it, it's going to become a collective crumble. So they've been studying it. They found that broken windows style policing, which if you want another way to describe broken windows policing, is policing for profit. The idea of quotas and growing budgets and growing tools and growing resources. Putting more police into the streets and into the schools so that they can have, you know, a presence all the time and sort of use intimidation as a deterrent to crime. And that's become a little rotten over the years. And in 2020, it could use another look. The second one is community oversight. There's a lot of ways we can handle this. The third one is to limit the use of force by officers. That's already on the state agenda. Anything we can do to include that in the discussion could happen instantly. Number four is to independently investigate and prosecute. So, you know, small towns like this, there's a lot of conflict of interests that happen. There's only a limited number of attorneys and support organizations and things like that. We need to be sure going forward that things are independent and fair. And it's not really that hard to do. Number five would be community representation. The community needs more civilian faces as leaders and representatives. So there can always be a liaison in between our elected officials and the loudest voices in the community. I think that's the best way to go forward. Number six is body cams and filming the police. I don't think there's any doubt that cameras are good for police as well as citizens. They even the playing field. They're a great thing, whether we're talking about dash cams or body cams. That should be a big part of it. Make sure that very strict policies are used to protect everybody. Number seven is training. Some police forces belong to unions, and unions organize their trainings. And then there's seminars that can be hosted all throughout the country. And, you know, they get a lot of their training from a greater group of police forces. We should try to localize it more and make sure that it's more controlled in the sense that we're moving in the right direction with the type of training. Number eight is to end for-profit policing. Number nine is demilitarization, which is another big part. We need to make sure that the police don't look so intimidated. They look like they're there to beat you up and make you disappear, you know? Number 10 is to make sure we have fair police union contracts. A lot of these union contracts protect police, and nobody wants to stand up for them. You have an opportunity to make those better going forward.
Okay. Your time's up. I'm sorry. Thank you. We should, next speaker? We'll come back to you. Pichu, who's the next speaker?
Victoria's here. Can I have Santa's hat to go? Santa's hat to make you clean, thank you.
Yeah, probably good enough. He's a hair stylist, comb dunk. Should have brought one tight, just a hair comb dunk, just.
While we're getting that set up there, just so everybody knows, every one of our patrol officers is now, now has a matty cap.
So I didn't personally do quite as much of the research as far as numbers go. Mine is a little bit more.
Can everybody hear?
Can you hear me?
You have the phone up here.
You have the microphone mic.
Terry? Terry Shaw? Can you do?
She said he went home.
Up the microphones, please. Terry Shaw?
That's a cool trick, I swear.
Terry? Terry, loud. Can you turn the microphones up, please? He's not hearing anymore. Yes, he is.
Speak softly, Bill, because he just probably turned all of them off.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, maybe that's better. So what I was saying though was that some people under paper appear with numbers and everything. And mine is a little bit more of.
Can everybody hear? You're going to have to hold it right close to your mouth.
Okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
Good. Like you were saying, mine is a little bit more of an outlook on some things that I personally would like to see both from our side and this organization and the people that are part of this movement, as well as what everybody on this board and the officers in this town can also do for us. I do have a breakdown of those things, and I do want to have an email from anybody interested. Just a few things that I've said as far as what I'm looking for our community to bring to the table. There may or may not have been, maybe somebody else is going to address this, but the idea of a task force that would open discussions as far as different, so to speak, if somebody gets arrested and they say that their arrest followed or broke some sort of protocol, I think it'd be interesting if there could be a task force for a community membership of people that would be able to review that footage or review the story as part of a, almost like a jury, but before the actual jury. Because sometimes, unfortunately, people go through certain arrests, and all it comes down to is a he said, she said. We sort of live in a community and a country that's going to value what an officer or what a person of a certain color is going to say over somebody else. So one of my thinkings is if we could possibly form some sort of a force that would combine both citizens as well as people like yourselves and like I said, how people police, we would come together if there was an incident that really warranted some sort of review. As we've already discussed in the last meeting, and it's something that we're all kind of thinking on, I'm sure, we are working to try and get young people and more minorities involved in politics. In order to make progress for anybody in this community, we need to have a panel such as yourself, and we need to have officers that look and well-represent the community. And there's one woman on the panel right now, and I know that there is. I know that there's a person of color. But, you know, I do think that sometimes it's intimidating for people to look at, you know, people such as yourselves and not feel like they're representative. So that's another thing that I would like for, especially us. And this is more us thing to do as opposed to you guys. We just need to work on trying to create that next generation of leaders. Something that I personally am working on, but obviously bringing it to you guys too is, as an artist, I'm really interested in getting a bureau program started in OAN. And I know that there has been some pushback to that in the past. But one of the really great things that's happening across this country in so many communities is young people, people of all ages, are able to come together and bring art to their communities. And it's not just Black Lives Matter art, it's just art in general. But I do think that that would not only be a great way to start integrating people of all different backgrounds, what ages, you know, politics, religions, all of that. And the more that people can come together and discuss what's going on in their life and find something to bond over, especially like with art, that's all, that's all the better. So I am currently trying to work with the Tri-County Arts Council, which I'm a member of, I'm trying to work with them. But I would really, really love if I could get some encouragement or some help from the city as well. Because it might be, in everybody's best interest, I would say, if we could show ourselves to town that does not push back against the artists and does not push back against creativity and free thinking. So again, that's something that I'm personally trying to work with. But I know I've heard in the past that the city hasn't been super open to it. But now, especially with the revitalization of OAN, everything that's going on right now, I think that that would be a really good time to start looking at that again. Is my time up yet? Okay. Is my idea ready? Just a few things that I wanted to mention for everybody up there, and like I said, both the police department. I would really ask that everybody on the other side of this to try and do your best to reach out to the community. I know one of the problems that I've felt over the years is that I don't have kind of a clue of what's going on. And I try to, because I do try to get to these kinds of things. But I do think sometimes it's hard for young people to know what's going on. It's like the older folks might know because things have always been down a certain way. But sometimes I do think it's harder for us younger generations to know. And I don't, I tried the website the other day. The website wasn't super user-friendly. So I just think that if there's a way we could get a little bit more connected on platform, such as Facebook or something, if we could post more updates about these kinds of events or anything like that, it would really help to bring, you know, this kind of a diverse group as well as a larger group, hopefully, to these kind of functions. And that's what we really need.
Okay. Sorry. My eyes are awful loud, so. But we'll give you more time again if you need it, as people thought. But just to answer your, I'm not sure who, who is not interested in bureaus or art and that. We've been looking for things like that for the community. So I'm not sure, you know, who you're talking to or who discouraged you. But no, we, that's things we want in this community. Okay. Pichu, who's next?
We should swap your microphones.
Oh, you're not? Okay. Sorry. I can't really hear. Okay. So I have a few questions for the mayor specifically. Are you in favor of a community review board?
Well, we're putting together these meetings. I guess I'll have to get Terry to turn this down a little bit. But we're putting together these meetings, and we'll, you know, we'll have as many meetings as it takes to get a consensus throughout the community on do we need one or not? So that's why we're here. If the need is there, if we need a review board, and I'm not opposed to putting together a review board. So in the short, that's what I'm trying to find out. So it's like, do I have one person telling me we need a review board? Or do I have 100 people telling me that? And if I have 200 people or 100 people saying, hey, you don't need that, then we take a look at all of that. So when this is all over, after we get the meetings, and we'll have more of these, as many as it takes, and we'll take a look at all the information, and then we'll make that decision. We definitely will have a, there will be an advisory board that'll come out of all of this. And it's not going to be a stacked board like I've been hearing. We're going to ask for citizens from the city of OAN New York that are interested and can bring a value to the plate. So, and that's who will be on the board, the advisory board, to move forward with these things. And maybe it's that, maybe it's that advisory board who will decide if we need a review board or not. I'm asking for talking, if you're saying a review board would be as advisory boards, or if you're saying a review board to review, like this gentleman said, police actions.
I'm, yeah, that's basically what I mean. But something that's more community-based, so that you are actually getting that insight from someone from the community or from the people. But thank you for answering my question. Do you want to see more diversity in the workplace, you know, particularly for the state?
Yes, I do. But, and to answer this young lady's question too about that, you've got to remember in New York State, okay? New York State, most of the jobs that we have at city level are governed by civil service. So applicants would have to take a test, get on a list, and then we are obligated to, if we have a position, let's say I'm just a used police officer. We have a police officer. We have to pick, we have to choose one of the top three for that list. And by that, I mean score-wise. So there's scores that you have to, you know, you have, you take the test, and then you have to get on a list. And then I have right now, I, we give preference to the city of OAN residents. And that's the same way with our, we have the workers that are in the clerk's office. That all comes off of the list. The workers that are in the, they're DPW. The guys that are, you know, who do work on the streets and all that goes off and off the list from civil service. And that's governed by New York State. So for me to just, you know, say, come on, I can put you in here, I can't do that. It has to be by list. We go out of our way to try to recruit minorities for, we're trying for our fire department now. You know, we tried for the police department. We tried for each job that we have. We have, you know, right now, we have, we have several, we have a police stature. Okay? That is, oh my goodness, you know, just, just talk. But anyways, you know, we have there, we have George Porco, is in the building, the custodian. We have Len Hirsch, who is the clerk. And these are people of color right now. So we have many, many women working for us. So we want to recruit, yes. The short answer is, yes, we want to recruit. We try our best to recruit. It's a matter of getting people to apply and then take the test. And, you know, and if they're in the top three, they're what's called eligible or reachable, is a word that's used a lot. They're reachable to get a position.
Okay. So I guess two questions off of that respond. How do you determine, once they've already gotten to that point where they're part of the top three or whatever, if they all have the same score, how would you then determine, would you then determine if they're eligible for that position by past work experience or, you know, just experienced period? And also, what do you mean by recruiting? How do you recruit people of color to come and work for the city of OAN? How does recruiting work?
How does it work?
Yes.
Work, in a lot of ways, it's word of mouth. We put out, we're an equal opportunity employer on all of our listings for jobs. Our fire department has actually gone out and tried to, you know, talk with people around the community to get them to sign up, the same way as our police officers or vice versa, talking to people like that. So we do it that way there. What was the first, what was the first question? I can answer the second one.
Um, the first question is.
Oh, how do we know?
Yeah, how do you determine?
Well, when positions come open, the department has, will hold interviews. And usually, there's a, usually depending on the position, they will, like, I'll give an example, the fire department, they will have captains, the chief and the captains on the fire department that will do the interviews. And they'll have a series of questions that they ask each candidate. It will score, and then that's where they're. The same way with the police department. They will do it that way. As for DPW, Bob Redd, who was the DPW director, him and usually his supervisors will interview candidates. And they will select, they will select a candidate that is, that is the, that the one that they feel will suit the position. And then that comes onto my desk, my desk for, for the authorization to hire. Okay. We have, we'll come back to you if you have more time, okay?
Can I interject real quick on that one?
Yeah.
Anybody can take the test. Anybody can sign up. You know, you just apply for the job, go to civil service. Anybody can take it.
Yeah. Get on the Cataraugus County website, under civil service. All the job postings are there.
It took me twice to pass it.
Yeah. But keep, keep in mind, there's also, there's also state jobs. You can, state civil service, there's a lot of state jobs. There's federal jobs.
County jobs.
County jobs, yeah. That, you know, county civil service is all the county jobs also. So there's many, many, many jobs out there that people can, you know, apply for, take the test. And there's also, probably one of the words, something you're thinking, okay, so how would you study to be a? you study to be a snowplow driver? Well, there is, there is tutorials on the state's civil service website. And even for a cop clerk type, you can get on there and there are tutorials for all of that. Same way with police officers, firefighters, any position there is, you can get on there and they'll give you what the job duties are and what you have to do. And then you can find a tutorial to help you, not just for that position, but there's tutorials out there also that can help you in taking a civil service test. You'll hear from a lot of people, it's a common sense test. Well, that may not be the case, so you're better off, get out the tutorials, take some practice tests so you know what you're doing. And all these tests are timed too, so there's a time period itself, okay? So who do we have next, Meacham?
Thank you. I'm Caitlin Harvey, I'm at Three Tabbies Town Hall. So I also wanted to talk just so I could, I didn't want to have something come up and not be able to say something if I felt the need to do so. I am primarily here representing the queer community, obviously I'm a white girl, and the queer community is firmly standing behind Black Lives Matter right now. The First Pride was organized by a trans woman of color as a riot against police brutality. So happy to have everybody. The first thing I guess I want to say is that civil service is an awesome situation when nobody knew it. I was college track, I was high honors off of high school, and no one ever mentioned civil service to me. I didn't care about that until I was well into my, like, first big role job. To get to that civil service test, I had to go to Ferdomia, my area of expertise. I worked primarily with high needs, being year old children, primarily on the autism spectrum. And for me to do my job, I had to go to Ferdomia. I tested at the top thirty in the state, and you take the test once every two years. So sometimes the civil service jobs, like I was, this was a state job that I was looking at, they don't always come up at the most opportune times. There are prerequisites for these things, and I don't ever remember hearing about it. So if we can get a school board on that to really encourage everybody to look at the civil service test, that would be amazing because you do get really awesome benefits. And encourage people to understand the actual interview process, understand that yes, you have to meet the first couple of people, then you have to return your letters, because if you do do civil service and you're offered an interview and you don't take it, but you don't send a letter back in the ten day time for you to take it off the list, it's important information to know. And nobody teaches you that, you have to go out and look for it. So just like it would be helpful if someone taught you how to pay your taxes, it would be really helpful if somebody taught us how to do that. And maybe they do now, I mean, I've been at school for quite a little while, but I think that would be really helpful. I guess I'd like to say, yes, I feel like a community review board is an awesome idea. I think that anything that we can do to get our community and our elected leaders on the same page is good. Anything that we can do, anything that we can do to feel like the community is a part of the leadership. I think it's great, and our leadership is a part of the community, right? Like, that's what we want to see. I saw John walking with his family the other day and that was really cool, like, oh hey, I recognize this person. We need to be able to recognize people. And sometimes I don't know if that happens as often, I mean, maybe it's also because we're not paying a ton of attention, but I think now everybody's eyes are a little bit more open. So I think being able to view each other as part of the same community is really important. I love the idea of bringing more art to the community. The theater of the oppressed is a huge, huge way that people, for centuries, have been trying to make their thoughts known and their feelings known, almost that higher than most of Shakespeare. And again, getting everybody together is really important. I wanted to talk a little bit about performance and allyship when we talked at the meeting a few weeks ago. And I'm gonna pause on that because at the end of the day, there are a lot of people here who need to talk more than I do because most of the time my voice is heard. I'm a white girl from a good house in a good neighborhood with good grades and a good job, and I make good money and I can afford to go do what I want and see Mrs. Witt at Andy's or hit somebody up at the bar, like, I can go out and do that because I'm not working for jobs. I'm not doing all of these other things, I'm not trying to raise a family, like, I'm in a pretty good spot. So I'm gonna stop talking and really encourage everybody else to make their feelings heard while people are actually listening.
Thank you. One of the other things with the state civil service, like you said, there was a, or top thirty, that's throughout the state.
Yeah.
But the other thing with the state, some of the jobs, you know, you may have to move across state.
Yep, absolutely. And if you don't want to, you have to tell them you don't want to, because otherwise they'll keep sending you letters and if you don't reply...
They're removed, you get removed.
They get very upset.
Well, you get removed from the list if you don't reply.
And sometimes they don't tell you that you get removed. And then you don't find you're not getting letters, it's very complicated.
Right. Meacham, who's next?
Hello, you mean? Hello, my name's Craig Close, my address is 1562 Ole Miss Portville Road, that's down sort of in, west of Mills. So I would like to thank the group for letting me in because I'm officially outside the city limits, so thank you very much. I wanted to say...
Just for clarification, reservations are right now, we're trying to give the opportunity to residents of Ole Miss first. We're not trying to exclude people from outside the city. We just want to give the opportunity, Ole Miss residents first, and then we will open it up to people from outside our community.
I appreciate that, thank you. I just wanted to say, a old classic, there's a pink elephant in the room that nobody's mentioned so far, and I think it was the first question that the mayor asked, and I would like to thank you also for having this in the first place, he's, I know, before. But you said, everybody says there's a problem. Well, we're gonna find out what it is tonight. And you made it sound like a mystery. Pink elephant in the room is racism. It's not, it's not a mystery. It's racist, we have problems with racism in Ole Miss. Nobody's saying that we have more than anybody else, but we have, we can't, we can't say, what's the problem? The problem is racism, okay? So now it's the test. Also wanted to mention, just by way of a story, very briefly, I am proud to be on the board directors of the African American Center for Cultural Development, very proud. And I'd like to say that sometime earlier in the year, in some of our planning for some of our programming, I tried to, I wanted to get a very famous ex-Oleander to come back here and do a concert. I don't know how many of you know Bill Easley. He's very, he's a world famous jazz musician and he's from Ole Miss. He lived in Ole Miss and he left Ole Miss to become a really famous guy. He's been back here a few times. And I got in touch with him, there were some other people who knew him, and I said, hey, I'm on the board of the African American Center for Cultural Development, would you come to Ole Miss and do a concert for us? And he, and he said, he first, he was pretty positive first, but then he told me a story. He said, the last time he came back to Ole Miss, because he had been a couple of years before, he said that he'd come back also for a concert, and his family took him back to his street where he was born, they went to visit his house where he was born. And he's on a better planet, hanging on a house that the whole door's down from his. That broke his heart. He told me that. So it's just one little thing, but that's one of Ole Miss's finest sons, Wayne coming back here again, he told me, he felt like, that's a racist town, I'm not going back again. That broke his heart. So that's the problem we have. And it's been there, and the Ole Miss National Justice Coalition and Black Lives Matter and everybody in this room is here to help with council and the city to just be a better person itself. Thank you, listen.
Thank you.
Can everybody hear me? My name is Justice Peterson, I live at 1206 Drew Street, which is north end of Ole Miss.
There you go.
I spoke at the last common council meeting and just, my main goal there was to kind of shine a light for people who don't know or don't have the ability to see the things that happen to people that are not them. We like to talk about having empathy and being able to step in other people's shoes, but the reality of the matter is that does not happen here as often as it should. Growing up here in Ole Miss, I remember walking down the street and saying hello to people that I didn't know, never met a day in my life, but they were an Oleander and so was I. I left for a few years, I came back, and that has completely disappeared. I've had more people cross the street to avoid me than I've seen them avoid mean dogs in some neighborhoods. And that's the reality of the matter. I have a few things that I believe, and I'm sure there's people in this room who share some of those beliefs. I believe in community policing first and foremost. I'm always for neighborhood watch over an outside entity coming in. But we've hit a point in our society as a whole, not just Ole Miss, as others have stated, where instead of directly contacting that individual that you think may be up to no good or whatever it is that you're calling in for, whether they're being loud, like out past the curfew if you notice their children, when did we hit the point where a neighbor is afraid to make contact with another neighbor and say, hey, can you guys keep it down? Hey, where are your guys' parents at? You know, there's a curfew going on. Instead, we immediately contact police. Now, on my background in law enforcement, I can tell you, my least favorite thing to deal with was always gonna be a domestic. A he said, a he said, she said, that we all have come to know so well. I believe most people are in agreement that as a community, we need to hold our fellow neighbors, our fellow citizens, our fellow Americans accountable for their actions. Now, the issue with racism in our community often comes from lack of that reaction. I've also had the privilege of working in the oil field based out of Shekel House, Pennsylvania. On my first day working there, the guys on my crew used the N-word as an adjective to describe their work gloves, their boots, and other items around our job field. Now, because it was a small group, it was myself and two other guys out in the woods in the middle of nowhere, a job that we won't see many African Americans work in, and if you know anybody who works in the oil field, they can confirm that. I stood up for myself and I told them, that's not right. But I also followed up with a question of, do you actually know black people? Do you associate with black people? Do you associate with any other minorities? Do you associate with people outside of your immediate community? The resounding answer to that question was no. Why is it that we are so afraid to speak to our fellow Americans? I do have a few things that I would like to ask the mayor, and I know a few people have already touched the topic of community policing. I believe, right now, there is the most distrust for law enforcement from the civilian population, more than we've ever seen in our American history. Mayor, would you agree with that belief?
Yes.
Thank you. So if we're in agreement that right now there is the most distrust between law enforcement and civilians than there has been in our American history today, what are some steps that you would like to take going forward to help bond those communities between law enforcement and community?
Well, I'd like to see, we used to have a very strong community policing effort here in Ole Miss. And because of calls for service and issues of, it's a poor excuse, time, we kinda got away from dedication to that. And I want to see us get back to that. We used to have the officers stopping in the neighborhood, getting out and walking, talking to the neighbors, okay? We still do some of that. Some of the things that our police officers are doing now is, they had a program with CARES, they had a program with CARES, you know, and that was to go and hand out, I think they gave out coupons for ice cream or something like that, to kids they saw doing good things. Some of our officers have been getting out and playing sports with the kids. So I think we need to get back to more of that. Believe it or not, I heard we made reference to police officers in the school, that is community policing. And the idea, the whole idea behind that is to have children comfortable with, and as also safety, to have children comfortable being around police officers way back when. And it's those, I mean, most of you know, I was on the police department for thirty-two years here in Ole Miss, and there was a big campaign on police officers are your friends. And I think we've got to get back to that also. So as a result, or as one of the outcomes of these community meetings, I've now heard community policing a couple of different times, and I think we'll take another look at that and get back to that. Also, I know, we've been trying to, Kelly Andriamo had neighborhood watch, was trying to get those going in each of the wards, and I think we only have, I think Jason, you took that over now, I believe, and I think we only have a couple of wards that have actual neighborhood watches though. We need to get back to more neighborhood watches also. Do I still have time?
I believe so.
Can we come back to you?
Yeah, let's find it.
Who's next, Meacham?
We have one more, I think, like maybe in the state, which is possible, Paul Selaya.
My name is Paul Selaya, 474 Prospect Avenue, Ole Miss. I'd like to start this out by saying that I think everyone in this town, in this city can feel comfortable and sleep well, knowing that our police force are there. They do a, they do a great job. I think they've always, in my, I've been here for seventy years, and I've known them to act professionally and respectfully, and I don't think anybody has anything to fear from our police. I think our police are very, very much on top of things and I don't think that we have the problem here that we see in a lot of states. I think we're in good shape here in that respect. Okay, now I'd like to go on to another thing. Black Lives Matter, yes they do, and Lieutenant Colonel Allen West, former Lieutenant Colonel Allen West, former Congressman Allen West, he made some statements the other day, and he mentioned that forty, forty percent of all black births end up in abortion. Do Black Lives Matter? He also mentioned that over fifty percent of all black births in New York City end up in abortion. Allen West is a black, a black man. So he speaks, he says, if Black Lives Matter, then we need to, we need to take that into a, as part of the matter. Do Black Lives Matter or don't they? If they do, then all Black Lives Matter. And I think I can leave it at that. And I speak for the unborn, those that don't have a voice, I try to be a voice for them. So I think all life is precious, right from the time of conception all the way through to our natural lives when it ends. And I'll leave it at that. And I thank you for listening and thank you for sharing your views. And I think we all should be respectful of everybody's views, whether we agree or not. And I want to just say one thing, no matter who we are here, we're all Americans. We're all Americans. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, I believe we went through the list and wanted to speak. Do we have anyone who would like to speak who has not?
My name is Shirley Daniels. My name is Shirley Daniels. I live at 306 South Berry. I was born and raised in Olean, went to Austin, Texas for thirty-three years. And I'm curious, because when I came back to this town that I was born and raised in, I didn't feel like I was treated very well, particularly when I went to purchase a home. And so I'm not gonna get into that story because that's, this isn't the place for that. But that was when I realized that this place that I grew up in is not what I thought it was. But fortunately, my life experience in Austin, Texas afforded me the privilege, and it is a privilege to get an education. I got to go to a private Catholic school. I have a master's degree. So that helped me to understand when I got back here that I'm a long way from the girl that left this town. Okay? So, that being said, I have a responsibility to come back to my community and bring my Austin, Texas experience with me. Now, the difference between Austin, Texas and only in New York, aside from the number of people that lived there, is that there is a lot of diversity and there is a lot of recognition for... the city manager used to say, "A good idea is a good idea, no matter how bad the person is that brought it to the table." And so, so just covering some of the stuff that we've discussed here tonight, it's gonna take a lot of work and it's gonna take everybody. Now, it doesn't matter what ideas we come up with or suggestions, whatever. It's gonna take a lot of work and not just you all working. You all need to listen and to hear, but it's gonna take everybody listening, hearing, and rolling up their sleeves and digging in the dirt. I mean, that's really what it's gonna take. So, one of the things that is to be very painful is when I drive through my community and I see these rundown properties. I mean, these property owners should be ashamed of themselves. And having, you know, owned a home in Austin, Texas, so I know what we're supposed to do if you're gonna own a property. There's a, it's like being a police officer. You wear the uniform, you're held to a higher standard. If you're gonna own a home, you're held to a higher standard. You mow your lawn, you paint your shingles, you do whatever. But because the property owners aren't held to a higher standard and accountability that I believe is part of the privilege with ownership, we don't reflect our pride. You know, if you're somebody that just comes to this wonderful little community in the Enchanted Mountains and you drive down some of our streets, you don't see any pride in the Enchanted Mountain here. And so I think that that's part of, part of our growing up and coming together and making our community a better place. Recruitment, I think that we should, and we, I'll do it, you know? I spent a career in human resources and so, and it's all a privilege to me. I don't take anything for granted. I'm humble, but I'm proud. Go to high schools and talk to the kids about the different opportunities and possibilities and give them a dream, you know, "You can." You know, whether you're gay, black, white, Chinese, it doesn't matter, you can. You just have to have somebody tell you that you can. I am privileged, I think, to work for Catteraugus County. The whole Black Lives Matter thing, we haven't even mentioned it over here. But my boss did tell me that Shoney knows two black people and one of them is me. So I think that that says something. And I say that here so that we can all get a sense of, everybody doesn't know. Everybody doesn't have a Black client. Everybody doesn't have one that lived on our street. And so we have to be sensitive to that. The Bural Program, I think that's a great idea. For one, it'll speak to many different things. Art, an opportunity for people to express themselves. Maybe have a quadra in each part of the city where everybody can have an expression. And maybe just have it be like an annual, you know, picture together. Like we all go to the Orbit Park and have a family reunion. So anyway, I, you know, we were saying that racism is the problem. Well, I think that we've all heard it said that actions speak louder than words. And when I talked about, you know, it's gonna take a lot of work if we all do our part or step up and be willing. Because it's not gonna be one of those opportunities where you do it for twelve weeks and then you pass the time. Because it's kind of like the, you know, church ushers. Once you get in that job, you know that you're gonna be stuck in it for a while. So it's gonna take, you know, recognizing that if you step up, you're gonna be doing it for a long time. Sometimes it ain't gonna be pretty, it ain't gonna be fun, and you're gonna be working with people that you don't like, regardless of, I'll tell all of that, I'll stand with color, whatever, because that's, you know, that's the job. But I'm here to tell you that as we take on the challenge, now that I look at my big mouth, you know, I'm in, and whatever I need to do in this community to make it a better place, I'm willing to do that and I'm gonna roll up my sleeves and do so. And I just want to commend you for being brave enough to get a bunch of people in room. We should never know what it's gonna look like. Yeah, we could be a hitman and we're all gonna love that. So anyway, thank you so much. And I hope that we, that we do walk our talk and we do come together. And I hope y'all will make those property owners clean up their act.
Thank you very much. And to go along with that little note on the church usher, did you notice how nobody is sitting up front here? I thought Reverend Tyrone Hall would say something about that. You know, I think I've been to services before where, you know, I'm captain, my trade. And the priest would say, "Everybody move up front." But, you know, you make a lot of good points. I'm happy to have you here. I'm glad you returned to Olean. And I think you can be an asset to us here, so we thank you. It just as everybody else in this room would be an asset to help, I guess, move things along. So we are moving in the right direction. Who else would like to speak who has not talked? And then we'll go back to the people who would like to speak again. Everybody shy? Okay. Who would like to speak again? Go ahead, bring her. We'll do another five minutes and then we'll move there, okay?
Okay, thank you. To touch on a few things that were said. One of them was you were saying, you know, you're gonna decide how you're gonna go over depending on if you have ten people or hundred people calling for something. I brought with me today the petition that we were going around, which I understand is just simpatic, has no legal effect of any kind. But it is a gesture of almost two hundred people calling for police reform in Olean. So I'd like to give that the affirmative. Also, to touch on some other things. Reforming police encounters work cooperating. So, you know, it's gonna be a lot of work and this is kind of unprecedented. So we are incorporating as a nonprofit to assist local communities, organize efforts, and can help recruit other people. The oversight or other functions covered under Executive Order 203, Police Reform and Intervention Collaborative. Anybody interested in becoming part of the team can get in touch with me. With the civil service exams. If a person of color got an eighty-nine on their score and a person of white privilege got a ninety-three, would you go out of your way and consider the lesser score first, knowing they're of color?
Well, are they each one of the top three?
Yeah.
I think each candidate would be given the opportunity and interview to... You know, it's hard to say because there's so many variables. But I would like to say that, yes, we would give the opportunity, you know, to a person of color.
And I don't think anybody would frown upon that if you were to make that some sort of policy. Everybody wants that. You know, poverty and mental illness make people vulnerable. And I end up littered throughout our Western New York region, our little community here. And it's just, it's just the way things are. But it makes them vulnerable. And so I think special attention should be paid to ensuring that they're not taken advantage of, whether it's by police or greater members of the community bullying them or trying to silence them or any other that, you know, you wanna be fair in the upcoming years as we try to get more minority involvement and things of that nature. Police reform, they need to be more compassionate, simply put. Community policing programs should not destroy liberty. You know, police have historically, over our lifetimes, most of us here, men and the guys that are out to get ya. That's the current image of police. They're not your friend, they're out to get ya. And most, any lawyer will tell you that. Don't talk to them, don't trust them. Do this, do that, go out of your way to make sure they can attract you. If you're looking to educate people on how we can... how they can be empowered to deal with police and know what they can say and what they can't say, what's right, what's wrong, so they know what to do if something does go wrong. Most issues of accountability, excessive force, things of that nature by police here, they don't get reported to the state. It's just business as usual here. Most of the time, in small communities like this, they report it to their sergeant or their captain or something like that, and that's the end of it. Never leaves another person's ear, you know? So, you know, that's why people are afraid of police. That's why you need to be very careful to intimidate people, whether it's them running away or acting nervously. Let me tell you a quick story. I got pulled over a couple of weeks ago. I was on my way to work. It was late at night, probably about ten PM. It was dark. The officer was driving in front of me. He pulls over to the side of the road and I drive by him and then he pulls back out to pull me over. I had a headlight out, just a random headlight failure. He came up to the window with his hand on his gun, ready to draw, but anyone was noticed. Where'd my headlight be? Now, I don't wanna get too rowdy about that. It was actually a nice encounter. Did what he had to do. He gave me the citation. I took care of it and then I stayed on my way. In less than five minutes, it was a good encounter. But he has the nerve to ask me, "What's the matter? Are you nervous? You got your hand on your gun and you're dressed in fucking swat beard." Who wouldn't be? We need to pay special attention to the way police look and behave. Smiling, repulsive, just like people do in our stores. It's highly effective.
All right, thank you. Next one.
Hi, Kate Harvey again. So I love talking about behavioral interactions and the person who is in power, and let's be real, a police officer is in power. Just like when I work with a person that I work with, I am in a position of power. And we have to be very mindful of our interactions as to not escalate a person who is having a challenge, right? If a police officer is encountering someone, most of the time, it's not to say, "Hey, what's going on? I'll answer your call." Usually, there's a problem, right? And when someone does approach you in an intimidating fashion, whether or not you are trying to be intimidating, sometimes things just are more intimidating. I'm a social worker. I carry a clipboard. I walk around to people's houses, people automatically assume I'm CPS and I'm gonna come take away their kids so they're shut in their mouths, right? So this is why when I go in, I go in in jeans and a T-shirt and I don't bring my clipboard, I bring a notebook. Or I actually have a teeny tiny, like, half sizes to have, like, a unicorn on it, a little unicorn. I have one that said "Ten Reasons Why You're Awesome" on the back, like, Kinderbarner stuff, to not intimidate families. Because you're not supposed to be intimidating people, you're supposed to be helping. And I have, you know, my own personal arsenal of therapeutic crisis intervention tools that I'm supposed to be using with people. If there is a problem, I know how to restrain someone if I have to. I've never had to. I had a six foot seven, three hundred and fifty pound man coming at me in the middle of an autistic behavioral issue, a sensory issue, an overload of sensory neuron issues. And you can change how someone reacts and how someone acts by how you act. It's called emotional co-regulation, and we teach this. Your energy will impact someone else's energy. And if I can do that, so can everybody else. I mean, maybe not like everybody else, everybody else, but for me and my job, that's a necessary qualification. If I can't do that, I'm not qualified to do my job. So if you can't interact with people in a way that makes them feel safe, when you're supposed to be a safety officer, then you're not qualified for your job anymore. And it's not that we can't change how people interact with one another, because we can. It just has to be done across the board, right? Especially when we're dealing with people with mental health issues, vulnerable populations. Man, that can be scary. It can be really, really, really scary to have somebody who's stoned out of their skull or on whatever coming at you. And God knows, there have been many times, Ryan's been thankful to have Olean's finest come up on game because I felt a lot safer. But that's not true all the time. And I think that there are definitely things that we can do as a whole with therapeutic crisis intervention to help bring that intimidation level down. And also in terms of, I'm sorry, I'm trying not to talk too much. In terms of mental health interventions, when we do have police officers who are coming across frequent flyers, and we all know there are frequent flyers, right? My partner's an EMS. I know there are frequent flyers with OPD. There's frequent flyers with Trans Am, also the Olean Fire Department, who is also paramedics. There are the frequent flyers, and what's happening? Are they just going to the hospital? Are they going to the hospital and getting an evaluation and a referral? Are they going to the hospital, getting an evaluation, and being sent home? What's happening with the frequent flyers? Because if the frequent flyers are the people who are causing the problems and the reason that police officers are now also feeling defensive, because if I take my gun away, how am I supposed to deal with that person down the road? Which I could see how that would be an issue. We need to make sure that programs in our area are being funded and that referrals are being made and that people know how to make those referrals. People know how to make those contacts. My program has not had a single police officer or police, like, referral process. Never, never, not once. It's all come from either the court or from the school. So if there's something that we can do to try to encourage everybody to work together and even if there was a single point of access, it's called SLOA. Single point of access, if there's a police officer designated representative of something, even added to SLOA... they would be then connected, they would be able to bring up this person, and they could connect them to resources in the area that would be most appropriate. And I am getting off my soapbox. Thank you.
Sure.
I would speak, please.
Well, especially you can let her go first.
Okay.
Justin, can I touch a gentleman?
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. Um, I would just like to, uh, speak on a couple things. I think that everybody has done a really good job as to putting in their input. Um, almost everyone that has spoke, um, has covered points that, um, I wasn't going to speak on. Um, I am, my feelings are heard, though, that there are people that, uh, are pushing out facts that would even make an entire race look like they don't care about their children. Um, because I don't think that abortion is limited to one race. So for somebody to bring up abortion, which is a very touching subject, not only just because of people's personal beliefs of moral, but also just because of, I mean, for religion, too. Um, I don't, I don't know why Mr. Allen felt like he needed to put that information out there as a black man. That black people or black births forty or fifty percent of the time result in abortion. That is very disrespectful. And it, and it, and it, and it, and it hurts. But for you to bring that up, I don't understand the direct correlation with the purpose of this meeting. What does that have to do with the purpose of this meeting? And I'm not, I'm not radical, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to come off, uh, and push my belief on people. I just feel like, as a black person, that I can just speak up and say something. And given the fact that I'm young, so I, I, uh, I know more people in the young community, I can speak for the young community and say that racism is a lie. Well, yes, we should love thy neighbor. Yes, we should treat everyone with respect. And yes, we should be sensitive to others, but it's not happening. And I'm not trying to hold, uh, hold the whole police force accountable, because I'm not saying that every cop is bad. But I'm also not saying that every black person thinks that they should have an abortion, or at least forty or fifty percent of them. I'm not saying that either. And for somebody to say that this is how they view us, that would be, that would be like if I said, "Every white person is racist." That's not true. My mother is white. I'm sure that there are people in this group that are white and are not racist, or prejudiced. Not all police are that. So I don't think that we should take that standpoint, and I don't think anybody else, I don't think only one person has only taken that standpoint to say, "Okay, this is, this is what they do, this is what they do, and this is what they do." Everybody does their, their own, their own things. It's, it's really hard to speak on it, um... Not, not, not going through it. And I can sit here and say that I have terrible encounters with police. And as a child, at fifteen, I experienced police child abuse. Now, you guys might not believe it, but it's also not for you to share my pain. So no, I don't judge every cop, but I'm very weary and I'm very distrustful, because sometimes the way that they come off is very intimidating. And it doesn't matter what gender you are, and it really doesn't even matter what race you are. But racism is a lie, and we need to take a step, like a very big step, on how we're gonna take care of that. Because we should be a welcoming community, and we should want to welcome more people, to want to buy more homes in this community and feel comfortable in our community. Too many people are moving from out of town to our community and then leaving again because they can't deal with it, or because they're not frightened. Because they don't know the right people, or because they don't have the right last name. There are hate crimes that are committed, it's evolving, and it happens. A lot of things happen in, in hope that people don't talk about, or that everything brought to light. And I'm hoping that you will do that. And I'm hoping that you will take an affirmative stand on it. And my only question to you is...
Can I please my speaker?
My, my most important question to you is, which I would like, I personally would like to know, um, besides what I just talked about, is... Do you have an affirmative action plan as to what you're gonna do in our community? And if you do, who's in charge? How do you plan on, how, how does that plan working? And, you know, since you're receiving funding from the state, and obviously Governor Cuomo said that you have to, you have to ask the community and reach out to the community, how are we gonna know that you're actively gonna reach out to every... I mean, you can't get to everybody, not everybody entered. But how are you gonna make that reach? If you genuinely care, how are you gonna make that reach to ask people of every color, of every diversity, what do you think needs to be changed? What can we do to change our community to become a better community? So that we can be, um, so that we can be, uh, um, not an influence, but, you know, that, that people can lead after us? That's what I want to know. What is your affirmative action plan, if you have, since you're receiving funding? And who's in charge? Who's involved?
Well, that's what we're here for, to vet out the issues. Uh, and then, uh, I'm going to have more of these town hall meetings, and then I'm gonna reach out to the faith-based community, because they have their congregations, and they can be a wealth of information to help with getting to everybody throughout our community and finding out exactly how we're going to resolve, or, or we may never totally resolve, but work on this issue of racism in Olean, and, uh, come up with a plan. And that plan will help put the committee together, that will, will work on this and meet the governors, uh, what the governor's putting out there, that we have to meet by April first of two, of twenty-twenty-one. So, I believe this young lady over here said that a couple times, said, uh, it takes the community. Well, if you go back to the old saying, it takes a village to raise a child. So, and that's what we want to do here. It's gonna take the community to solve these issues and to, and again, poor choice of word, solve, because we may never solve, but to get a handle on everything and come up with a better plan. So, do we have, we have, uh, do we have an affirmative action officer right now? Uh, no, but that'll be in the plans in the future. I know we do have a affirmative action program, but, uh, you know, we have equal opportunity employer, uh, so we will move forward. And, uh, I have three more, uh, two more of these meetings set up, and hopefully, uh, we'll get a crowd like this, people that can give us their thoughts and their input. And then I will be reaching out to the faith-based community here and, uh, working, trying to work with them to, uh, to get out to their congregations. And I think that'll be able, uh, a lot of people that will be able to discuss things, whether, and look to making Olean a more welcoming community.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm leveraging him. Am I leveraging him? I'm sorry. God, I need my soapbox. Um, I would just like to really encourage to make sure that it's not only faith-based communities that you're reaching out to, reach out to the local nonprofits, reach out to the schools, reach out to other things. Some of us don't choose to go to church. Some of us of us don't feel comfortable going into a church when they're saying, you know, homosexuality is wrong, and you're going to hell, and all that jazz. So, I personally don't go to church. Um, I know a lot of people who don't go to church, but find faith in whatever we need to find faith in outside of church and by doing good work and by doing everything that we can do. Um, but just not necessarily just faith-based communities, because a lot of times the nonprofits, the library, et cetera, et cetera, reach out to a lot of really vulnerable people. Um, and sometimes the most vulnerable people don't get into social shit as much as we would necessarily like, particularly with people with developmental delays, mental health issues, that kind of stuff. It's, we also don't have public transportation offices in Olean, so that sometimes matters with that. So, anyway.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask, is there any way we could get police department? That, that is in the charter, of course, in the Executive Order 203, and he encourages police departments to get involved, whether it's captains or the police chief. I think it would be important, certainly, would we get that man on this meeting?
Yes, yes. Um, as we move forward, yeah. I, uh, you know, I didn't invite him here tonight. I didn't want, uh, people to think we were having a show for us. So that's, they're not here.
Yeah, they're part of this community, too.
Yes, they are. And in the future, our police chief is asked on vacations, so... So, but in future meetings, yes, we will have police involved, too. Yeah, we will with fire department, so, uh, all that stuff, so... Way in the back, Paul.
Thank you. My name is Donovan Bressi, I live in Five Hundred Fourth with Sullivan. Uh, I returned to the community sixteen years ago with my wife, when I met here, born in Boston, sixty-four to sixty-eight. Taught in Buffalo for around thirty-four years, and did Miracore and Olean High School. Also worked with the mayor about fixing up houses, what that went to naught. One of the things we couldn't remember around here is the fact that we get a little more courtesy towards each other. In Japan, it's a thing called wa, which you are super courteous here in Europe, on the, even to the point of bending over backwards. There might be something to think about. Number two, uh, you should have the Olean Police Department read its mission statement, especially the chief, who is useless. I don't mean to say that he's not here, but he is, isn't. I don't mean to ban him out from here, but he's not very helpful. He picks and chooses who he wants to help. So if we can't go in, we start, or we'd like to think about this mission statement. We might get along, but thank you for listening, and I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna wait to the end, I just want to say standard and warm.
Thanks, Donovan. Uh, it's Karen, right?
Justice.
Justin, I'm sorry, Justin, I'm here.
Justice.
Like, no justice, no...
Justice.
Um, I just had a couple more questions I wanted to run by you guys. Um, first of all, do you currently have anything in the works for police reform? I seen Governor Cuomo is signing some type of policy or something into effect to start that process, or give some funding to start that process, whatever it's going to end up being. I just wanted to hear directly from you guys about your thoughts, um, if we actually need police reform so far, from what you've heard, or what you know?
Well, I'd like to reserve judgment until I have more of these community meetings. And, uh, yes, and as a first part of your question, you know, the governor has, uh, has, uh, said that we must put together a committee. I'm waiting for guidance from New York State Council of Mayors, uh, on that particular order, and we will move forward towards it. But I want to reserve decision on the second part of your question till we start to, till we have more of these town hall meetings and get to, you know...
Get the way of the land, yeah.
Yeah, get more comments from, from everybody, so...
Okay. Um, also, I, I've messaged the Olean Police Department on Facebook, and I got the response back of they don't actively monitor the page, and I understand that. But, um, I've asked around to some of my neighbors and such, and other people from the community. Uh, if Olean Police Department has any type of community outreach program currently going on, and also, do we have a designated public information officer that handles FOIA requests or any type of clarification on what the Olean Police Department's mission statement is, or what their youth support guidelines are?
Um, FOIA, if you're talking about FOIA, uh, that is the city clerk is our FOIA officer. So all FOIA requests will go to them as per the mission statement, and, uh, that'd be, uh, that would be the police chief. Talked about the mission statement there. And, uh, we can, uh, there again, uh, as we move forward through these meetings, uh, starting to hear a lot of good ideas, uh, we can, uh, look at incorporating them in, uh, to our policies.
And I have, uh, one final thing to say. I personally believe that just this room right here shows me that everybody's willing to work together. So I believe, and I would like to know if you all believe, that we can actually make a difference and make things better for all of us as a whole in the city of Olean.
I've lived in Olean for sixty-eight years, okay, my total. I've, uh, born and raised here, I've never left Olean. I've devoted my life to Olean. And I think that, yes, we can make a difference. But then we have to do it together, we have to do it with open minds, and we have to do it compromised, but we can make a difference.
Thank you.
So, thank you, uh, John, go ahead.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it.
You didn't clean it.
That's all right. I'm okay, took my vitamins today. Um, I'm really appreciative, uh, for the showing here tonight, and I'm really appreciative to the mayor for putting this together and, and organizing this. I mean, uh, I think as a council, uh, as representatives of yours, uh, we heard your concerns the other night, and I'm really glad to see all of this. But my biggest concern is, as someone brought up before, is longevity, okay? Um, emotion and frustration are short-term, you know, anger, frustration, sadness, those are short-term things. And I want to see this turned into action and change, all right? Um, we need to make it better, but we need to make it better for everyone. And politicians are great, all of us, okay, at jumping at a moment, but the issue is longevity. So I ask you guys, all of you, to hold us accountable. And how you do that? You vote, all right? Let me meet you, let me meet you, please, with one meaningful statistic for tonight. That's twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent of registered voters under the age of forty-five in the city of Olean voted last year. Okay? This movement, the, the people, the protests have largely been people under the age of forty-five. You want to hold us accountable, you go vote. It's that simple, okay? And I hope we can make some positive change and do it together. Thank you.
All right.
You don't have sanitizer.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what John and the mayor said, and what all of you said. And, you know, it's not gonna happen if we don't all stick together. And I think the one thing that I see in Olean that happens is we start something, and then it splits apart, and there's a group over here, and a group over here, and it doesn't get done. So, one of the reasons that I made that amendment the other night at the county council meeting about having a committee, it wasn't just for, um, Governor Cuomo, it was for us. And I think, in my mind, what I envisioned that night committee is to have a couple county council members, the mayor, at least two people from the police department, um, one representative from the police department, but also a union representative. Because you're not gonna get anything changed or anything done unless you have them involved. And that's the bottom line. And then go from there and have maybe five to seven, uh, community members. And just tonight, there are so many of you that have such great ideas. I love the art idea. I was gonna be an art teacher when I was a kid, and I missed out on it, so I'm, I'm here. But I just want to say, stay involved, and John's right, keep us accountable. So often, people run for office, and I saw this on the county level, and I hope the county eventually gets involved, because they're bigger than us and they have more resources, they have the mental health, they have the social services. All of those people have to be involved, and it's worth the work. So I, I really applaud you for coming tonight, and I hope you keep coming, and I hope you tell your friends, get involved. And, you know, that's the bottom line, and I think everyone sitting up here is more than willing to work for people. So contact us, or, you know, we'll reach out to you. My husband and I walk around Olean all the time, so we talk to people all the time. My husband and I walk around Olean all the time. We talk to people all the time. And, you know, it's interesting, um, and I just wanted to finish by telling you, my husband grew up in the Bronx and it was a tough neighborhood. He got loved a few times, you know, on the subway and things. But when he came to Olean, he drove in and it was during the autumn and the trees were beautiful. And he did his residency in, um, Vermont. So he just thought, oh, he said, "By Vermont, I'm gonna live here." And he's been here 35 years and he's never, ever wanted to leave. And he's a Jewish guy from the Bronx. So Olean has embraced him and loved him 35 years. So I know we can get this done, but it's gonna take a lot of work, folks. Thank you.
One more back here.
Mayor, I don't even like the phone. Um, I work for Assemblyman Joseph Gilley, who works, uh, for the New York City Legislature. I really just came to listen, but as an elected official, he doesn't know what you think unless you tell him, just like all these people here. And I'm sure if you were here, he's at another event at the other end of this district. Um, he would kind of know for being here and for sharing your voices, because they don't know. Even if you're not on whatever the city comes up with for, for the task force or whatever it's called that the governor recommends, um, sharing your voices and your ideas is very, very important. That input is what we do. And that input is important to the state officials, the county officials, the city officials and all of your legislators. So thank you so much on behalf of the Assemblymen for coming.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. Uh, we passed out a slip tonight and I'm at slip. It's my email address. Uh, there's also, you know, several, I know I've been to meetings before then and some people don't like to get on a microphone and ask questions or give comments. So my email is there and I will, you know, if you want to give comments, ask questions, send me those emails. The other one, the, the one section of the community that I also hope to get out to is the silent majority and try to hear all their concerns also. So, uh, putting this together, uh, having these meetings, getting comments, we're trying to test, solicit comments and concerns from, uh, all the residents of Olean and, uh, moving forward. So we have, uh, we have a lot of work to do. And with your help, I'm sure we can, uh, come up with a better project. So thanks, everybody, for coming. Have a safe trip home.